So the call meeting back to order. Start with a pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, and welcome to the South Burlington School Board meeting on October 10th. Why don't we, we've had a lot of turmoil in our state over the last 24 hours or so. Why don't we start, before we even get any comments, with a short moment of silence thinking about the four, or the five children from Water Bear area that have deceased? Just a couple of minutes. Any comments from the public regarding any items that are not on the agenda? Tim?
Hi. I'm Tim Barrett. I live on Royal Drive. So, I want to ask a question tonight. I'm also in the city council, and I attended the steering committee last Wednesday. And from what I understand, as stated by Pat Noack at that meeting, she was hoping to have a clean vote in November on this Tiff bond ballot item. And so she was looking for some feedback or guidance from the school board about that, in the sense that you seem to have sort of a three-two split over any changes in configuration. And it seemed like you weren't looking at any changes in configuring the schools. And she wanted to have a clean vote where there was a disconnect between any changes to schools and the Market Street bond along with the Dumont Park. So, this is my question to you. I know that in '89, you signed an agreement for the driveway with South Berlin Realty to maintain the driveway entrance on Market Street. And that was a written agreement for 10 years, right? And that expired in '99, I guess. So, there currently is no written agreement at all. So my question is, would you consider pursuing another written agreement with the realty company for, I don't know, say another, just 10 years in case Central happens to be there? We don't know how long it's going to be there. We're hoping it'll be there. Some of us are hoping it'll be there for quite a while, right? But in effort to really commit to the public that that property is not going to be really touched at all during the Market Street construction project overall. And to get that separation so that voters know that the Tiff really isn't connected to Central School, the Tiff is about Dumont Park and Market Street construction, and actually, you know, doing the work so that the rest of that street can be completed and then other construction can start. So, because my fear is that as things progress, there, you know, as an example, in Shelburne, the railway company dropped some Jersey barriers, right, in Shelburne, and created a bit of a conflict there. It was resolved later on. They were removed. And I just, I don't, I can't predict the future. I don't know what's going to happen. I would just hate to see, for some reason, that we lost that entrance because there wasn't some sort of agreement in place. So, I would ask the school board to examine the possibility of looking at writing up another 10-year agreement and getting that signed with South Berlin Realty, and trying to do that before the vote so that we can get that out to the voters and say, here are these two distinct things. And when you go to vote November 8th, it's really about getting Market Street built and also getting Dumont Park worked on.
Thank you, Tim. Yeah, I think we were planning on having that conversation a little bit under master planning and visioning, which is item A on our agenda. It wasn't listed specifically, but that's what we, that's part of what we had at least mentioned we would try to discuss.
So should I sit tight?
Yeah, I'd sit tight. Thanks. Any other comments from the public, right, if they're not on the agenda? All right. Amendments to the agenda? I have one I need to make. We're going to go back into executive session for the purpose of discussing the academic records for suspension of discipline of students where premature general public knowledge would clearly place the board at a substantial disadvantage. Any other amendments to the agenda?
No.
Okay. Announcements, David?
You have them by your place. Again, just some activities going on. Again, if you want to participate on Wednesday, naturalization ceremony here, it's always a requested event to do it here. So again, if you're interested in doing that, just let me know, or you can just come on.
Who's officiating that?
It is Judge Conroy. He's a community member and a past parent. Also, hold the school celebration, their outdoor jam and jump and move, which is at Chamberlain on the 13th. And then open house, again, this is, we're getting a lot of our open houses done, but Chamberlain will have that on the 13th as well, so they have a busy day on the 13th. District-wide teacher in-service day. And again, this is one of our, this is a focus. This is not the whole day, but it's a focus on diversity, equity, inclusion, transferable skills in science throughout the district. So we've got a plan in place to ensure that that is going to get done. And then homecoming. Actually, someone was asking me, when's homecoming? It seems like it's passed. I said, no, it's coming up this weekend, so 14th and 15th. A whole lot of different activities. Float building, you see, on the 15th. Again, we hope for good weather for that group. They always make it fun, so a lot of students get involved. Those are the announcements I have. Pat?
Any other announcements from board members? I'll just announce that Isaiah is not able to join us. He did let me know. And Elizabeth is not joining us tonight.
And I do think maybe just a thing on this, the community meeting day, media day for RETN, again, the gracious group that continues to broadcast our meetings, which we so appreciate. You have a media day coming up on October 20th. And so, as you know, RETN plays a critically important role for us in communicating with our public, for those people who can't make it to the meeting or have busy lives and want to stay abreast of some of the things that are going on. And that's certainly why we feel so supported by RETN.
Absolutely.
It's on the 20th.
Thank you. City and school collaboration. We normally discuss the meetings that Kevin and Helen and David and I have. We haven't had one since our last meeting, because our last meeting was just a couple days ago. So not much has changed in that regard. Anything you want to add to that, David?
No, I think a lot of it was, again, Tim talked about a little bit of steering committee meeting and our past meetings. So I think more of that may come out of the master planning and visioning conversation, as you mentioned earlier.
Great. Let me run along. Superintendent's report, please, sir.
So, my report is specific to kind of the, just ensuring that we, you know, the Rebel name activity process that went on, the kind of the concerns, the request for information. So in your packet is kind of the responses to some of those questions that are administrative next steps that we outlined. So again, the decision was to try to just give you kind of the step and then an update, you know, throughout the document here. So certainly happy to ask for any questions. I'm also happy to have Susie in the audience, too, who's been instrumental to me in moving forward this work. And it's not just Susie, but Susie and many, many other folks have now, you know, come on board and are helping us. Most importantly, our students, I think, are really demonstrating some really positive leadership that's happening throughout the district. So I don't know if there's specific questions.
Last, I just want to state one more time that Isaiah's not with us, and I know Isaiah wants to be involved in this conversation. I did let him know via email, and I made sure we will circle back with Isaiah so that he feels that he can have his voice heard here. But that being said, any questions from the board members?
Well, I mean, I could weigh in now, or I can weigh in at a subsequent meeting if we want to have it back on the agenda when Isaiah's here, but I'm happy to give my two cents worth.
Why don't we do that now?
First of all, I'm really pleased with the steps that the administration is taking with respect to diversity and inclusion. But at, so far, I've not really seen anything that's directly addressing the issue of the Rebels name. And I just want to go back to about a year ago, when the administration, in advance of us taking any vote, provided us a letter that kind of explained some of the steps that were going to be taken. And it's an October 5th letter that you provided to the board, I think, based on information. And some of the, you know, we looked at options as far as getting rid of the Rebels name, changing the Rebels name, Green Mountain Rebels or something like that. Or if we're keeping the Rebels name, there were a number of steps that were listed, that all school programs and publications could include a community-developed definition of what it means to be a South Burlington Rebel, that students at the middle and high school level could be briefed as part of social studies classes in the exact situation and on issues related to the inappropriateness of Confederate imagery in today's society, that South Burlington has been without a mascot for 25 years, and if Rebels is retained as a nickname, each school or graduating class could identify a new mascot. This mascot would should be gender-neutral, nonviolent image, such as an animal named Rebel, for instance. And that schools could institute a Rebel of the Quarter or Month theme program. There's a little more detail on that here. So there's a couple other ideas as well. And I know when I made my statement and decided not to vote against, or not vote for a change in the name at that point, I specifically, I will reiterate some of what I said, that the question for me is whether we are able to separate the Rebels name from its negative connotations now that we have had this community discussion. I'm not sure that we can, but I'm willing to allow the administration the opportunity to try to do so by implementing the various recommendations that they have put forth, some of the recommendations I just read. I think the administration should also solicit and consider ideas from others on how to emphasize the positive associations of the term Rebels and teach students about its historical context. So essentially, my vote was that I was not pleased, and I recognized the issue that people have with the Rebels name, but I also recognized that there are a lot of very good connotations. And from many people, you know, that was what Rebels mean. And I did not want, you know, the Rebels name to be associated with the negative aspects, but I felt that we needed to do something to have it associated with the positive aspects. Having said all this, you know, the administration did come back in November with this game plan, which you've reported on now. And I think this is very important progress that you're doing. I think that's great. And I didn't, I think at that time, I didn't comment that I didn't see that it had a lot of direct action steps for addressing, you know, what the Rebels name or moniker should mean, as opposed to what some people are claiming that it means at that time, because I wanted to see what the administration would do. And what I've seen is that though we've made great strides in the diversity and inclusion and such, I have not seen the actual symbolism of the Rebels name dealt with at all. Now, I was only one of five people. There was no motion that you have to do that. This was fine that you did this. We weren't, there wasn't a direction to you. But I just want to lay that out, that that was the basis for at least my vote. And I have not seen what, you know, things that have been done. And I'd probably vote differently today, or I'm hoping instead that the administration will take this to heart and start looking at the actual symbolism and try to address that, so.
Want to respond to any of that, David, at this point, or?
Maybe here's other board members. I'm happy to respond to.
Any other comments from board members?
So the one connection, Mar, those are good points. I thank you for being so clear about that. So as I was reading the update, and I did not have a chance to reread that document, so I'll have to go do that. Some of what I was wondering here under this update is that we have identified areas of priority, and it's, so I'm assuming there are some priorities that have been set. And when I heard what Martin had just said about some of the suggestions that were made, they were, we could do this, we could do that. So to me, those are framed as, those are possible scenarios, not specific ones. Still valid to Martin's point that I think we need to address some of the monikers' history. Is it, so my question, or my assumption was that some of what this group is doing in identifying those priorities is working together as a group to address some of those issues from that group before, not from the board down or from the administration down? Does that make any sense at all?
No, it does. I think that, you know, this is, the administrative recommendations at that time were kind of our best guess to move forward, given the circumstance and the information that we were provided on the Rebels kind of scenario. But what I think we've uncovered is that there's a whole lot more work to do in order to begin that process. You know, when we look at kind of global-related issues of bias, there's a whole lot more work that we know we need to do. And it's a result of, you know, Susie coming on board, Susie, myself, and the administrators digging deeper, learning more, recognition of, really, there's much more to it in order to be able to move forward appropriately, right? And so it's about the mindset, it's about moving people from where they are today, it's about developing those, you know, that understanding. And I think we're making great progress in that way, so that it's not specific to one issue. And I don't want to say this is a small issue, but it's not one issue of just the name, because it could be something else. It could be just the name, it could be an action. So I feel strongly that we're moving forward, actually, much, I'm much happier than with the progress that we've made than if we had just dealt with just that issue. I think we're looking at all of the right things. I'm happy to say to you, though, that, you know, if there's a need to circle back and maybe activate that conversation a little bit more, bring some, you know, we may be ready to bring some more finality to that. But I really feel strongly that we're working with the students, with, you know, our community, which is made up of our teachers and our staff, board member, students, a large group of students. I feel like we've made really, really appropriate progress, and those groups have been helping to direct our work. So, you know, I feel like we've, I would have been happy if we just did those things, but I have to tell you that I think that we're in a whole new place as a result. And we have uncovered a lot more work that needs to be done. But, you know, I hear what you're saying, Martin. And I think probably where the missed, you know, where there's missed opportunity is that kind of keeping you up to date on all of the work that's been happening across all five schools around, when we look at diversity, equity, inclusion. And we've dealt with it at every school so far. You know, Rick Markcott this summer was, you know, a really sensitive but huge learning outcome for our staff there as we opened up the school year this year. Perhaps I haven't kept you all informed on all of the things that we've been doing in this realm. So again, this is just a little snapshot of that. I don't know, Susie, I mean, would you like to add anything else?
I thought you captured it, please, David. I have nothing to add to that, but I appreciate Martin bringing it up again, and maybe would revisit Isaiah's eloquent comments at the last board meeting where he said he looked forward to future dialogues on this topic that matters so much to our students, including on the rebel identifiers.
I think one thing is that in here, it says that the Student Diversity Union and the Alliance were interested in discussing the Rebel name, and that's fine. But I think one of the directions from the board was that we engaged the entire student body. And I would be a little worried about just having the focus on one group of students rather than the entire student body and the faculty, for that matter.
Yeah, I think we have to do, it can't just be one event. You know, I think this past Friday was an example of an event where, you know, it allowed for a wide level of participants, some probably more comfortable than others. But I think it begins to talk about some of the bias issues, and I think it gets at the root, you know, some of the root causes and root needs that we need to be paying attention to. So I agree, we can't be an isolated group, can't be one committee to check the box off. We know that this is a much more embedded need, and we want our students to be able to leave, you know, our experience in this district in a much more, you know, appropriate understanding place than, you know, than many others that might be next to them as they move on. So, I mean, I think we're going to, we'll keep after it. I'm hearing your comments, Martin, and I think we can give you a little bit more feedback on the moniker specifically, which is part of the, there was a lot of energy. I don't want to disclaim that, but what I felt, there was a huge need to look at it more globally and...
And don't get me wrong, I really appreciate what the administration's been doing in that area with diversity, inclusion, with looking at the culture, with looking at, as you said, root causes that could lead to issues. Yeah, that, it probably is, you know, that's the dog, and probably Rebels name is the tail, but it's important. And it's important to a lot of people. So I just don't want that to be lost.
Good point. Appreciate it.
Can I offer a visual? On Friday, I was really excited about what the high school did. It was a very, very proud day. And I just want you to know that after school that day, there was a private soccer match, and it took place in Middlebury, and some South Burlington High School students were on that team, and there were Burlington students and others. And right behind where they were playing, these Middlebury College students, a pickup truck drove by with a huge Confederate flag on it. And it was, it just hit me. You know, it's like, it's, there it is. And I'm sure I wasn't the only one to be struck with it, because it was a very obvious, slow-moving car. And it was unfortunate that it was that same day. I'm sure it had nothing to do, because it was in Middlebury, it wasn't here. But I appreciate what Martin brought forth, and the conceptual things are great. I think there is still something that I look forward to hearing, what the students want to look forward to, or not.
Thank you. Okay. So let's make sure we put this on the, our next meeting is not for a little while, so let's leave it on there and...
Make sure Isaiah has an opportunity.
And then if you and Susie could give us some of the additional specifics, I think that would be helpful.
Maybe we'll keep it, we'll put it as an item, again, under the superintendent's report.
Yep, that'd be great. Budget line item, budget discussion?
We're, you know, John and I are working on it. We, again, we haven't had a lot of time since the guideline, your information came out. You guys have provided some budget directions, guidelines, ideas, opportunities from each of you.
Well, I think they were mostly attempts to say, if you could provide this, then we could provide back guidance about the budgets.
That's right. So we need to, we have not had the time personally to do that yet, but we will. And I think you can have that back on the, again, November starts really moving fast. So we're going to, but we'll have it there. I think actually, it is, we've got financial planning and budgeting, and we'll just need to add budget timeline or something like that.
Right. We should redistribute the budget schedule again as well, just so we all have that.
Yeah.
Okay. And David, this is not on there, but would you, do you have an opportunity to just provide a short update about what we may be doing with our students, considering that the situation in Harwood, if any of our students need some space?
Yeah, so again, you just opened up with a moment of silence for the five students. Which is typical of administrators and teachers to reach, you know, all over the state to support one another, particularly with the need of services, if guidance services or other administrative support is needed. So we've done that to Harwood, to their co-principals. But we've also, last night, actually, I informed the board members, I don't know when that was, yesterday, right, or the day before?
Last night.
Of the sadness.
Yeah, I think it was yesterday, yeah.
And we also informed the staff, and so it's about every school, I believe, I don't have 100% assurance that they met before, you know, school, but just to make sure staff are, staff and teachers are okay, because again, when this happens, it ripples across so much, so much of our own community. And then we know students, I mean, I think as Monica said, you know, the kids from, you know, playing in a soccer game are from all over the place, music programs, et cetera, there's likely connections to those, to the Harwood students. So all the guidance staff was kind of, in all schools, was, you know, ready and available to respond. I haven't really gotten an after-action of today, but we're going to keep at it. And we know, we do think that, you know, the days to come will continue to be hard for certainly our partner community, but also for us, some of our own kids. So we'll keep a watch out.
Thanks.
And I'd appreciate anybody, if you hear anything, you let me know, too. I think that's one of the messages here, is that if people are having a hard time in our society, we've got to not just say it once, but we've got to let people know. And as a school system, you know, if we know that somebody's having a hard time, you know, we may need to take some action, you know, of a community member to not allow access. But it's really that, the essence of that communication is really what can help people, get the help that they need before something bad happens. Anyway, I'm not, I can't, I can't control that part so much. I can only control, you know, the things that we do to support our students and our families, but, so that's where we're at.
Thank you. Any questions for David on superintendent report in general before we move on? Master planning and visioning. So we do not have Elizabeth with us tonight, but, so I want to be sensitive about how much we move forward here on this topic without her presence, but we do have a quorum, so we can move forward. I know we've already had a question thrown up about the easement, which I know a couple of us have heard about before. Is there any thoughts on that? I know, Martin, you and I were just chatting. Do you want to offer your thoughts on the easement?
Well, I mean, my thought's pretty straightforward, that as far as the easement's concerned, I mean, my one concern I have about the bond and proceeding with marketplaces, making sure that we have continued ingress and egress to the school for buses and cars. You know, as far as the bond itself, other than that, I don't think that it's completely separate from what our decision is with respect to proceeding with the schools. Going a little bit of a tangent, I mean, I think it's a win-win situation to have the bond passed, because to the extent that the school is staying there, having sidewalks that kids can walk onto school from some of the nearby neighborhoods, promoting additional residences in that area, it's all good for the school. If somewhere down the road, there's a decision to sell the school, the market value of the school would be improved presumably if that area's developed. So, I mean, I think it's a win-win situation. That's personal viewpoint. But my one concern therefore, though, is, you know, we need to be assured that we are going to have ingress and egress. And I guess the question is for David, is, you know, what do we know about whether we do have an easement, or, you know, do the plans that are been put forward for the street, does it make clear that we're going to continue to have ingress and egress?
Yeah, I don't know about the redesign of Market Street. I honestly haven't seen the redesign. Initially, there was two different road structures passed that we're going to take. One was different. This one, actually, I think is quite consistent with what's currently there. So they're basically going over what was there, or be doing that. So I think, you know, at the present time, again, we have been on kind of the gifted easement from Burlington Realty. There's never been anything, South Burlington Realty, there's never been anything said that there was going to be any sort of a concern or termination of that. But I do think it's important that we get it in writing and make sure that we're protecting our, both in and out, you know, location. It's not the greatest at the present, so maybe we can work to enhance it a little bit, too, in the meantime. But nonetheless, we'll look to make sure we have it.
Is that, I'm sorry.
So there is some, I think there is some understanding that they are going to be doing some developing, South Burlington Realty. And so, I mean, we have talked, they have talked to us a little bit about that space.
Well, it was initially, right before you enter into the, it was on the northbound side of Market Street, just before you go into the entrance of the school. There was going to be two buildings that were there. And so with that, there was, they were very receptive to entrance in, out of that, off of that. So that was actually put on the plan. But I think... But I think it's important that we make sure with whatever's gonna go forward. I don't know if those buildings are still in play, I I really don't know, we need to make sure, and I I hear what you're saying on this due diligence, to make sure we have it written and confirmed that we'll have.
And if that's not a possibility, can we access from other places besides Williston Road? I mean, like, might have str- because doesn't our property?
Yeah, we have, we have a lot of a butters. I mean, we're we're a large property owner in that area, obviously. I mean, I think it would be disadvantageous for someone not to work with us, but, you know, this is an important business that we need to make sure we get agreement. So, I think to Martin's point, let's make sure that that we have that.
So.
I started and T's crossed.
So, another question, I mean, if somewhere down the road, and and people know my position, that I don't want to consolidate, don't want to sell Central School, but I do understand that the, and I'm gonna get the terminology wrong, but the the map for Burlington and Development and such has a road across Central School property. Now, wouldn't that mean that there is some form, I don't know if it's connects to the current entrance that we have to the property, or if it's somewhere else, but that would say to me that there is some sort of an easement that the city is expecting, even if someday down the road, there's not a school there. It's, you know.
I would expect that 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 probably meant that they own the property at that point, so they don't need an easement.
I don't know, I just, no, they have, they have a connecting road through the Central School property.
I think there's.
In this long-term map, and I'm just wondering if that somehow connected.
It's probably good that I just researched all of that for you and bring it back, but I I know that there was several plans that I have seen over the course of my years here, where, you know, there was different iterations, one of which was a road that was going through it. I think that was in, what I viewed that as, it was part of the city center development plan, planning, so there was different, you know, different structures, different road configurations in and around on that property.
This was through the comprehensive plan.
This is a comprehensive plan.
It's been, it's been a long, it's been for a very long time on there, is my understanding.
Yeah.
But, you know, putting that aside, I would like, you know, if we can, because I think, you know, we do owe, well, we owe it to ourselves and to the people's interests in this issue, that by the November 8th vote, we have some sort of assurances that, you know, as much assurances as we can by the next meeting of November 2nd, this would be my proposal, that that we are going to have ingress and egress and and this bond and the Market Street development that will follow is not gonna impact that. You know, adversely, I mean, there's gonna be impacts if there's development there, but you know, I mean.
Right, 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 temporary impacts.
Right, yeah.
Yeah, I mean, certainly, I think the city wants to work with us. They don't want us to turn back on the Williston Road entrance or exit.
Right.
It would, it would significantly change their corridor, they're not interested in doing that, and so they're strongly, you know, opposed to us doing that and want to work with us to ensure that there's, there's entrance into that property appropriate. So, I I don't, but that said, you know, there's a piece of land that's needed, we need to make sure that we have, you know, a long committed agreement to that effect.
So, so what I think, let me just check, make sure there's agreement on this across the entire board, that it looks like we are suggesting that we are asking David to go seek that easement in some legal form, so that it's not a, an assumption that can be pulled out.
Yes.
Is that fair?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, yes, I would, I would agree, and and as a, as an advocate for consolidation, I still think that we need this, even if in the short term, because even if we convince people that consolidation does make sense, it's not gonna happen in the timeframe, that we do not need an easement, so.
It's important to us.
Got it.
Thank you. Master planning and visioning, continuing along in other topics, I know we had a laundry list of things that we kind of ended our last meeting with about things that if, oh, I'm sorry, yes, go ahead.
I really appreciate everybody making that commitment, supporting the process regardless of whatever your opinion is. But the other thing that really raised a red flag for me was the ingress egress will exist on Williston Road, and I know we all said that that's not where we want it to be, but one of the other things I'd urge you to consider would be confirmation that we have a written legal agreement with the easement, which is what you said, but at the same time, confirmation that the, that entrance won't be interrupted at all during the paving process, and we wouldn't have to use Williston Road at any part during the paving process. So, even if it was like temporarily shut down.
Unless it was a school, the summer, right?
Unless it was the summer, yeah, so like the school buses wouldn't have to use Williston Road even for three months during the school year.
They did, they did work with us on that, if if I can respond to that.
Sure, please.
So, the city has come to me, you know, and started just some initial dialogue around the paving or the reconstruction of Market, Market Street, because it's got sewer, electrical, water, widening, you know, all that stuff there, so they would work with us around, you know, still maintaining our same entrance, obviously, and the same path, but they might move us, you know, to the left, to the right, and maybe not the same width that we currently have, we may have to work on, you know.
Access from that side, but maybe.
Yeah.
Slightly changed way.
Right, so, you know, it may be a little, little bit difficult, depending on the magnitude of of the work or where they are in in a stage, so.
And that's under discussion, not a.
That's right. And what I would do is absolutely try to make sure that we we look at timing, you know, so if the east side can be, you know, the focus of, you know, the school time and and get the, get the west side done.
Right, right.
First, so we don't have an interruption, would be my goal, similar to what we do with construction in the schools, you know, elevator projects, you know, summer projects, et cetera, same thing, to ensure that that's there.
And I mean, we've, we should remember, I mean, we've worked very well with the city on Market Street, and they really came through a few years ago and paved the 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 rest of the Market Street, which was in really rough shape, and and, you know, they did that ahead of schedule because of urging from from the district.
Thank you, Mark.
So, so I I'm not concerned.
Kids cut the ribbon.
Yeah, the kids cut the ribbon, it was, I think, letters that came from the fifth grade that must've pushed them over the top, but but any of that, but the point is that I I have no concerns that we're not gonna be able to work that timing issue out, you know, so.
Well, the the easement thing is an important thing. I got you, we'll get, we'll get that.
Just one last comment. So, I think there was some chatter last week about parents that thought there needed to be some like fog lines painted on the road on Market Street so that kids could be somewhat safer, because there are no sidewalks at this point in time, and I think the city responded pretty quickly, and I I think they, did they paint some lines on Market Street, did they actually do the work? I know that the machinery went down there, I don't know if they.
I don't think it's done it yet, Tim.
Done it yet, but there, I think that they they heard the the clarion call, so, so that just.
They've been very responsive.
Really points out the fact that, that, you know, as a city councillor, here's my pitch to the voters, okay? Market Street will never be what it can be unless you don't vote yes on November 8th, right? Because if you do.
No, if you do, but.
You will get an E and W wide street with pedestrian bike access, a complete street with trees and everything.
Okay.
So, here's your chance, be safe for kids, thank you.
Okay, Tim, thank you.
Can I, can I just get one for you, you said the east and west, that's a temper, you're never gonna have any Williston Road access.
No, east and west, Market Street.
Only Market Street, okay.
I was just saying, phasing.
I thought you meant cruising, okay.
Phasing Market Street so that.
Got it, thank you.
West would be done before east, so it wouldn't interrupt with our.
From Market Street, got it, thank you.
Well, let's face it, east would interrupt it, too, right, because we have a lot of people coming east and west on Market Street now, in buses, but right in front of the school, you can imagine if they're doing that, it's gonna be sound, it's gonna be dust, it's gonna be all of those things, machinery, you know, so, you know, we would certainly try to sequence that if we possibly could.
Okay.
What is the goal, to have a legal easement in place by November 2nd, so voters know it's there before they vote on November 8th?
Yeah, I think we're asking David to go pursue this as quickly as he can.
Yeah, and I.
Not knowing the 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 hoops that that's gonna entail.
Yeah, and let me just say that we've never had a situation to date, you know, there's been agreements, you know, between Self Burlington Realty and and the district, and even before that with with Randy Munson, it's always been extremely positive and favorable to that, so I do get it, though.
I don't think you can guarantee we're gonna have a a deal by November 2nd, though.
No, but I I think that.
As far as we can.
Well, let me, let me work to to make sure we have.
That's what we're shooting for.
But I think it says a lot if we have it or we don't, and I think that's the question. If Self Burlington Realty is willing to work and say it is an investment for all of us, we should hear that, and if it's, I don't know, we have to work out the details, that's information voters want before November 8th.
I, I, we hear that, for sure.
How would you be able to update people if the next meeting isn't until?
November.
November 2nd.
You have to wait until the next meeting to, if you, if you work this out by Wednesday, is there a way you can?
We don't have a meeting Wednesday.
We don't have a meeting, but I think if David's able to work this out, we could, there's any number of ways we could reach out to the media with a press release or something that says this happened.
Perfect, that's what I'm asking, yeah.
So, I think we'll, we'll see what, we'll see what happens.
To help. Yeah, I know what you're saying, Martin, to to help inform.
Yes.
Yeah, yeah.
Lots of absentee voters.
Yeah, a lot of people don't even know about the access, right? A lot of people think that it's our land, all the way up to Market Street, you know.
I think it's, what is.
But most people, I I would venture to say, in the community, have no idea that we have a little chunk there that's that's that has given access. They've actually viewed that in many ways, that it's school, you know, all school property. So, anyway, that's good.
Okay, great. So, other master planning, we had, ended the last meeting with a kind of a laundry list of potential questions for David to go research. Again, that was just a couple business days ago, so I don't expect you to have answers to those, but I think that's our next step, as I would, I would suggest to the board, is that we've, we give David some time to try to attack those questions. I absolutely understand that some of the board members were feeling those would be nice-to-haves, or they might change me if they were dramatic, but there, people were fairly settled in their positions as well. Do people feel that's a fair next step? Would they want to suggest some other path at this point?
No.
Okay. So, I've, I've sat down with David once on this, trying to make sure that he and I at least were on the same page about what those specifics were. We'll keep working through that before our next meeting and hopefully have some, some of that out, and then we can move to kind of some clarity of next steps in the short term. Okay? Anything else on master planning and visioning? All right. Update on negotiations, Bridget or Martin, do you have an update on negotiations?
There's not much of an update, we are eagerly awaiting them to start.
The support staff.
Support staff and teachers. And they they should start no later than sometime in early November. I, I believe that there's an obligation under, under law to start 120 days before the town meeting day, and that's sometime in early November, so we should be sitting down soon.
Great. Can I add, Bridget?
No.
All right, we are making progress. Executive limitations, policy monitoring, treatment of parents and guardians. Back for, I think, the last round.
Well, I don't, so, I took a stab at responding, again, Martin had some, some good questions around the kind of the overall wording policy, particularly kind of the evidence component, so in yellow, page seven of seven, it adds a statement that essentially indicates, you know, that I've complied, but I've also, I know that Martin maybe has given some feedback on this when he was last in the office, but I'm not sure.
I think it's brilliant.
And so, this.
Well, take it and run.
Now, what I will tell you, in the policy governance world, you know, there's not a lot on the overall policy, they're kind of, they're quiet on evidence, so I was interested. I went to a lot of different folks and looked at their specific one, and it's kind of funny that they don't have that, so I think that it is probably right just to provide some sort of summary to the whole policy.
Well, a- a- again, not, I'm gonna beat this dead horse, but it is without limiting the scope of the foregoing by the numeration. That key language there says you can't ignore.
I never liked that word, I never liked all the foregoing, I just wanted to go forward, Martin.
Right, well, there you go.
Yeah.
Anyway, it's good, I thought it was good, and.
Okay, so, last meeting, we went through all the detailed policies and and agreed that there was reasonable interpretation, adequate data, and they were in compliance, and then we got to the summary, and we were not able to do that, so I will re-ask that one on treatment of students and parents and guardians with respect to interactions with students and parents slash guardians, or those applying to be students or parents slash guardians. The superintendent shall not cause or allow conditions, procedures, or decisions that are inequitable, untimely vague, undignified, or unnecessarily intrusive. Reasonable interpretation.
Yes.
Adequate data.
Yes.
In compliance.
Yes.
There we go. Topics for the other paper.
I forgot your list that you had sent around, I, even if you mind me.
I didn't bring it myself either.
I don't have the list, do you?
Well, I mean, I think.
Well, the other paper, in the future dates, the other, it's on this superintendent's report.
Those are, it's not the list that I think Bridget and others had offered some suggestions, so. But I don't think any of us have that list, so we'll recirculate the list, and perhaps we will make suggestions back to David.
Well, I I think we should go ahead and try to come up with the next two, though.
Well, and, yeah, and the question is, yeah, master planning and visioning, I think folks were looking for some sort of sense of where we are in master planning and visioning, it might make sense to leave that as the the suggested one for October 27th deadline, even if it's just to say, you know, we're.
We might be able to write an update on the easement.
I mean, I I think that that the communication around the TIF and master planning and visioning is an article in it, in and of itself, you know, just providing some level of clarity that city is doing and is going to bond.
Mm-hmm.
And the school board is doing its due diligence around master planning, to to Martin's point, you know, there could, I think there's a real need to provide clarity to that, it's a good suggestion.
At lea- at least.
From what we're hearing, I I don't know, we certainly heard that loud and clear from the city.
Right.
Do you think, so, it's due by the 27th, and it's hard to know if you'll know about the easement, yeah.
I don't know which date, I I think regardless of the of the easement, I think the conversation on the TIF is in and of itself isolated from master planning and visioning, which can be.
I think it's the right thing to do to write one about master planning and visioning for the 11-3. We're not asking anybody to vote on it, so it's legitimate to put it in there. I know there's some concerns about putting things that close to the vote that are vote related, but these are not, so it would add clarity to your point, I think, so I think it's a great suggestion, Bridget. I'm happy to write it, or if somebody else wants to take it on, that's fine with me, too.
It's not an easy one.
It's not an easy one.
We're all gonna edit it at the end of the day.
Yeah, well, yeah, yeah, that's true.
Good point.
I'm happy to take it on.
So, as far as I'm concerned, so. Thank you, Bridget.
So, the the budget, would that be the next one?
No, it says negotiations.
Well, that's what it says, but we can.
Yeah, I don't think negotiations, that's not gonna be time for that one, because we'll be negotiating.
Right, true, good point.
So, I would say.
Questions whether it's too early for budget. Yeah, are we gonna have enough information for budget?
I think I suggested the budget one to be a little later.
I don't think it's, I think that's premature, because we.
Well, it, I guess the question, well.
Because we have a budget on, for February, which I think makes a lot of sense, because it tells people kind of where we are with the budget, unless we're gonna do. Well, January 26th, right, so that's.
Late.
That's, that's a little late, yeah.
I think it's good to have one in there, you know, wherever we are in in the budget process, it could be that we've had X number of meetings, we're narrowing in on, we have, you know.
Well, we can talk about the the budget process and how we deal with that.
Budget advisory.
Or, if we really want to take on something, we can talk about how the budget works in conjunction with state law to come up with a tax rate for funding.
There you go.
500 words or less, I don't think that's possible.
If we can explain how we fund schools, 500 words or less, just imagine.
No pressure, John.
John, can you ghostwrite that for me?
500 words I could do before I go to bed tonight.
Yeah.
Well, yeah, but it's got to have a full explanation. It can't be just the start of an explanation.
He actually already sent you guys one.
It's going to be over the next five issues of the other paper.
I read that. I did read that. That was a good one.
Well, I mean, that would be the.
He kind of already did it.
The start of it, I think.
Kind of the button.
Yeah, you said that.
See what you think.
Mm-hmm.
Well, that would be good. I mean, if -- I mean, it's -- there are obvious complications in it, but if it can be somewhat simplified.
How about a column from our new business manager?
No, it's not board.
Yeah, we've been board members.
All right, sorry.
Nice try.
Well, I ghostwrite it for you.
Yeah.
But I did not write that, you know, for purposes of the newspaper, but if I'm going to.
No, it was good, though.
Re-look at it to make it more, you know, newspaper-y, I could try to do that.
Right.
Along with those lines, I had also suggested that list, that we pass one off to Susie on either wellness or diversity, equity, inclusion, you know, like have her actually write one of them.
I think they -- they put stuff in.
Regularly, we have a page.
We can have her help us write one as a board member.
Yeah.
The only thing is that I will request that I'm not going to do the one in November.
What's no -- so we don't know what that's going to be yet.
Well, November, I thought we just said was master planning and visioning, because we wanted to have that right before.
I thought we were going to do the October 27th.
Yeah, I meant.
That's what we're talking about, because that was on November 11.
No, we're talking about November 17th.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Yeah, I'm talking about the next one after that.
Deadline's not published yet, so.
I don't have the list in front of me, and I can't remember off the top of my head.
It was a good list to start from.
There was 21st Century Learning, because we keep talking about that, but not really explaining what we mean by it. There was more on personalized learning plans, because I talked about those tangentially in the PBGR article, but personalized learning plans are getting pushed, you know, further down grade level-wise, so more and more parents are going to encounter them and.
They've had -- the parents have had meetings with the administration about each, like down here and at the high school, right?
Mm-hmm. But that could be a good thing to have more. Trying to remember. I had a bunch of others that might have been good or bad, but I can't remember off the top of my head now.
Yeah.
Do I have that list?
Yeah.
Have I not pushed, circulated it, or?
No, you did. We just -- none of us brought it.
It was for the last board meeting, and we just didn't really have a lot of time to talk about it last time, so we didn't dig in.
Well, the key is that we have next -- this next one. That's what we really have to decide.
That's what I want to suggest to you. Let's task ourselves with having Bridgette write this one, and then let's -- I'll get that document listed again, and we'll get it added to the agenda so we don't lose track of it, and we'll discuss it next time and get it nailed down.
Okay. So add other paper articles or next suggestions.
Yep, we'll just carry this for the next agenda. Speaking of the next agenda.
Our next agenda was just set the agenda for an issue. So budget timeline, again, we've got a lot going on there, but budget timeline could actually come under superintendent's report along with.
Update on rebel name?
Yep.
And we're going to need more time, I think, on this meeting for master planning and visioning than this allows.
I may have to recalibrate these monitoring reports.
Yep.
Maybe they would go out and be available, but we maybe would only work to create action on a couple of them. We're not going to get through all those. So let me work with John and the central office group around which ones we'll do. I think the ends monitoring matrix, we, you know, probably can keep on and have a conversation. I don't -- but let me look at that. S-BAC results, I think, are important. That could be a story also that could go into the other paper. Assessment data, how we're doing, you know.
That's a good idea. That was on your list, wasn't it?
I think it was. Yeah, I don't remember, but yeah.
Once you get the report, then you may want to, you know, maybe other components of information you want to get out, too, a report card kind of thing.
Yep.
Speaking of S-BAC results, it just made me remember something. I was going through some information, and I noted that for the kneecap science scores for 2013, 14, and 15, Chamberlain did the best of the three elementary schools. Just FYI. I thought that was interesting.
Yeah, I mean, depends on the what subgroup you're looking at. I mean, absolutely did well.
Yeah.
They did well. When we break it down into different subgroups, you know, there's some matriculating there.
Sure, sure.
But absolutely, I think, you know, we -- what's interesting is when we go from the kneecap information to the S-BAC, the correlation and cohort tracking.
Right, right, right. That's going to be good.
You'll see some of that when we talk about the assessment.
Somewhat of a non-sector.
No, it's.
Any other agenda items for the second? You all set, Lou?
Yes.
Anything under future agenda items that you want to comment on or bring forward somehow?
I mean, a couple things. Can I?
Yep.
So, you know, we do get requests that will come through me, you know, to be able to do a little report or something, an update. And some of these are your ads, too, you know. But I worry about the list becoming so long sometimes, you know, and I'll take like Common Roots report. It might be good, perhaps, that a couple of you might be able to meet with an individual to be able to be heard by the board, as opposed to having it taking your whole time out, you know, to do some of that. I don't know. Obviously, individuals like Common Roots love to come and present to you, but it may be better served if you had a kind of a small subgroup for a couple items or something and then could report back. But, you know, they're on here as future items. This one, actually, I think we've, you know, we put on because Karen McQuillan, who's part of Common Roots, really would like to come and share and update. I'm not opposed to doing that, but I'm also trying to be sensitive to the work that you guys are trying to do, and I -- so I don't know, some guidance on that. Certainly fine to try to just keep figuring out places to plug them in.
Yeah.
Are there other ones besides Common Roots that we could do as subcommittees, David?
You know, I think meeting evaluation could be a conversation of a couple board members, maybe, who could just talk about, you know, particularly go to V SBA, what are other policy governance? Again, Pat and I are going to be down there on the 19th, and then a couple of you could do that, that either say we want to do something different. That's one.
Schools Foundation, which I think is the schools foundation as well. There's not much of an update there.
That's right.
There is on that one.
Right.
But just to make sure that we've kind of monitored what's going on.
So I don't know. I mean, I'm fine to keep, you know, this was the -- as the Diane Bogby always was watchful of.
I think it's a good idea.
Future agenda items, and she was like, well, when are we going to get to those? Because they keep going. And remember, we've also had tick marks that we've had, right? Remember?
Yeah, that didn't work.
Remember we put check marks for every, just to keep notice? Well, it did work.
We'd be to a three-page.
Ran out of space, right, don't we, now?
On the first two, the EQS ones that are both tied to monitoring reports, why are those on future agendas if they're in monitoring reports?
They were something specific.
No, we kept them on there because they were desired, but what we said was, it was just education quality standards. You're going to hear about it in the monitoring report 2.10. So we kept -- so when 2.10 comes up, then that will come off.
Okay.
So we didn't lose the item. Because otherwise, if I just said, oh, we're going to, you'll see it, then you may not do the cross-check.
Okay.
All right, so EQS conversation.
This has got a May 2016 date on it. That's what's part of my confusion as well.
Um, May 16. That's when we were, boy, was that when we were going to do? Have we not done 2.0 or 2.10? I have to look at the date. I don't know. That was the rationality, right, Pat?
Yeah, yeah.
That's why we did that. So when we did the monitor report, that would take that item off the future agenda item.
Right. Okay. So the first one, EQS, it says monitor 2.1, and we just did 2.1 tonight.
Yep.
That's going to go away now?
2.10, it's different.
No, this is a different policy.
2.10. 2.10.
Not 2.10.
Right.
Yeah.
It's curriculum.
That's awesome.
I was close. We almost got it.
I know, that's confusing, though.
It is, it is. That's part of the, you know, policy governance is.
Fair enough.
Fair amount of iterations under 2.1.
So the managing the monitoring reports.
Where's that? Oh.
I mean.
Board committee or group?
Yeah, well, yeah, the, yeah.
The question was whether.
We could assign the monitoring reports to subcommittees.
Right. I mean, but the way we've been, what I had suggested, and we just haven't had time to do it, is that we would pick a monitoring report and really go in depth on it in public so that occasionally the, you know, viewers of RETN would really understand what we're talking about for that. That's just never happened, and I understand why, because that's biting off a lot when we have all the other things going on. I mean, I would sugge -- I think we're, the way it's working right now seems to not.
Can you clarify one thing?
Yeah.
So you said grab one monitoring report and go through it in detail. That's not what we do already?
Well, no, I mean, really.
You're suggesting that's different.
I don't think that's what this was, honestly.
Well, no, that was a little separate.
This was a discussion about whether we go back to the issue of doing it by subcommittee and then the board approving it together, or we just continue to do.
Based on the recommendation of the subcommittee?